Thanks for coming and joining us today. I'll call to order the Wednesday, December 11th, meeting of the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners. Will you join us to the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with whom all justice is served.
And two urgencies.
I know.
Different speeds.
So this morning, we've got a variety of things on our agenda. We start out with a consent or with the citizen input. If you want to say something about something that's not on the agenda, you fill out a blue form up here and give it to Sharon. We've got one request to speak from Steve Bowen, so you can come up and do that. And if anybody else has anything after that, we'll call them next.
There we go.
Right here.
I had to bring my Power Ranger.
Yeah.
So, sorry.
If he says something, he may be the youngest testifier we've had since I've been here in three years. Yeah.
Again, thank you for letting me bring him in. His mom's sick, so I have him today. So with that, I want to tell you, thank you for allowing me to be here. I'm asking for a motion to be made to end this debate dealing with the Terribon refinement plan. Highway 97 will be the main corridor when the Cascadia earthquake happens. I don't think this has been discussed much, but I believe ODOT's being very short sighted up front utilizing any other plan other than the five lane or doing a bypass around the community. Redmond Airport is and has been expanding to accommodate this. PDX will be underwater. I-5 will be unpassable when and if this does occur. 97 will become the new I-5 stretching from California to the Washington State borders. Also, I believe ODOT's been using bully type tactics. It did not really show the results of the last meeting they had in Terribon. I believe this was also very jaded in the fact that ODOT had folks coming from Crooked River Ranch and also coming from Redmond that had input on this. They gave a, when they gave their statistics to you, they didn't add the 30 different forms that Janet Abus of Terribon had included with it. That wasn't put into the results. So I again believe that they've been very jaded towards this. I believe ODOT also has shown a lot of disrespect to the community as well as you as the commissioners with their comments and actions. This was pretty well decided and they, at the last meeting, as you know, they gave two options, the interchange or the couplet. Again, initially, they had done this and I believe it's become very divisive and that was quoted by the ODOT Regional Manager and has been created by ODOT. I'm asking you to stop the madness. I ask for a motion to be made to take 11th Street out of the refinement plan. ODOT needs to think outside the box. There's already a five lane engineered plan study that was proven to be as safe as the couplet that they proposed initially. This was given to, I believe, Senator Bentz in the last couple of days and it was documented initially at $20.8 million. With that being said, when they came back, they said it was going to be close to $40 million in one year's time. I believe the tactics that they're using now is trying to wear us down as a people until we give up. As you've seen by the many testimonies to date, the small community of Terribon has not given up. With that, the long-term plan is not even showing widening the four lanes from Terribon to Cinder Butte or the High Bridge. My grandson's three years old. When he's 23, it will still not have been into the long-term transportation plan. So I'm asking that a motion be made today to take 11th Street off the table for any future considerations of the Terribon refinement plan. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you for allowing me to bring him in.
Yeah.
Oh, no, it's wonderful having him.
Thank you.
Perfectly mattered, three-year-old.
Yes, a three-year-old.
And if there's anybody else that's here interested in Terribon Refinement, it isn't on our agenda today. It will most likely be on our agenda for next week on Wednesday meeting or the following Monday. So we'll set that later in the week. Is there any other citizen input? Seeing none, we'll move on to our consent agenda, which today is primarily appointments to boards and thank yous for people that are getting off the board. So anyway, let's seek a motion in support of that, unless, is there anything you wanted to pull off?
No, I move that we accept our consent agenda of today.
And I'll second it.
Okay. Any further comments?
Yeah, with that, just a couple of thank yous. We're sending letters thanking for service for the Central Oregon Regional Housing Authority and the Noxious Weed Board. So some of those specific names, Michael Hinton has worked for Neighbor Impact and been on this Oregon Regional Housing Authority Board for many years. And I've crossed paths with him in a few different opportunities and he's done a great job, what a great community servant. Getting housing built in the last few years, they've been able to really bring some housing on and he's been a board member at the Housing Authority. So I want to specifically thank him. And then also the Noxious Weed Board. You know, noxious weeds are those things that just are non-native in our community. We have Spring Olson and Kelsey Josie, so we want to thank them for their service. But for all citizens to think about the, you know, noxious weeds is just those ones to get going, they kind of have some momentum. And we've been able to stay on top of that, manage it in Deschutes County, so get to know what they are. But I want to thank those folks for really advocating for understanding what noxious weeds are.
Great, great.
And I would love to acknowledge at this moment, our Community Development Department. Their Christmas tree this year is going to benefit COVO, Central Oregon Veterans Outreach. It was an amazing tree this morning that we got to witness when we had breakfast and I want to recognize the department, what great joy and how they really do care about you, the Deschutes County residents, and how they treat each other. It's a great team to be part of. Thank you.
Thank you. Wonderful. So with that, Commissioner Devon?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. That completes our consent agenda. So the next part of the agenda is action items. So the first item is deliberations, consideration aboard signature document number 2019, DSH047, an outdoor mass gathering permit for 2020 Four Peaks Music Festival. Kyle's going to lead us through this.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Kyle Collins, Associate Planner, Deschutes County Community Development Department. As the Chair stated, this is a deliberations for an outdoor mass gathering permit, specifically the 2020 Four Peaks Music Festival, which will be held between June 18th and June 21st of next year in 2020, and a 150-acre parcel owned by DM Stevenson Ranch. The event itself is for an estimated 3,000 people at maximum. That includes staff, vendors, and all volunteers associated with the festival. The proposed dates outside of the actual event itself, which is from June 18th to June 21st, the full scope of the permit would be from June 13th to June 22nd. That's the final day of proposed operations associated with this. The record closed after the conclusion of the public hearing on November 25th for this file. At this point, the Board is open to discussion any of the items associated with the permit itself.
So this, go ahead.
I have a question. It said if the irrigation pond on site is less than 50% full, they have to have a water truck. Now, how do they get the water out of the pond? Is there a way, a means to get it out of the pond? Because to me, it seems like they should just have the water truck there. If the fire starts, you know, it's starts, you know, it's 150 acres.
That I'm not sure about, Commissioner. My understanding is it's likely associated with a pump that's associated with the irrigation.
So my understanding, if the irrigation pond is less than half-full, a full water truck will be on-site. So it's not water from the pond, it's off-site, you know, full tank of water.
But I think Commissioner Dare's asking the same question I had as well. What's the value of a half-full pond? I mean, how does that prevent fire or put out fire?
How do you get to the fire if it's the pond's over here? I mean, with the truck, you can actually, you know, move around. You've got, you know, you've got to have hoses and everything with the truck, I would assume.
And I don't know for certain. I think that's ultimately a condition that was imposed by the Fire Chief itself in previous years past, so this is a condition that's come forward, I believe, at least in the last two years since it's been at this particular property.
So I could extrapolate a little bit. So I mean, fire apparatus does have drafting capability. They have a big hose they can drop into, because I see that down by, little to Deschutes by where I live, they have drafting site, La Pine Fire, and it's set up for a truck to be able to drop a hose in. So that would, I think, be the scenario.
So I had kind of the same question. So is the assumption that the pond is there, if there's a fire, the fire equipment comes from the fire station and they draft, as you call it, out of this pond? Is that what you're expecting? It doesn't actually say that here, but that's what, I kind of thought it was implied, but I don't know.
It's just life experience. But yeah, they would come with a full tank and if they need to refill, they would draft to refill. Fire District would. And as I say, this is just me explaining what I think I know.
One of the reasons we didn't just rule on this, I guess, or after the hearing immediately was this question. There's been, I know the neighboring property owners that have the forested land behind Stevenson's were, had written, and their attorney had written a letter concerned with fire issues and we just have this heightened. And so I had the same kind of concern of, are we doing enough for fire? We had Dave look into it in terms of legal. Could we ask for an additional condition? He feels we could, right? And it'd be, it would, it could be challenged as being unreasonable, but we're, I think we're just kind of doubling down on fire protection as being important. You want to share what you know?
I would just point out that, yes, I believe the Board could certainly further clarify Condition 18 with regard to the fire suppression, the water source, whether that is implied and assumes that there's appropriate apparatus to apply the water on the site. That could be clarified as part of that proposed permit condition and, yeah, at the end of the day, this is tested on whether these are reasonable health and safety conditions and if there's an aggrieved party that thinks differently, they do have a remedy through Circuit Court to potentially challenge that, so.
So, and you said the comment from the attorney for the event sponsors made the comment, well, it's cut fresh grass or something and so there's no danger, but it is in June, in the middle of June, so it's possible, it is a grass field. I don't know if the whole field's cut or not, but, I don't know, what's, are you, would you like an additional recommendation or a requirement or clarification of this?
So we're depending on the fire truck to come from the fire station two miles away and get the water. But they're going to bring their own water truck with them? Is that what happens?
Maybe Kyle could speak better to it, but my understanding is that there would be a water tender on-site if the pond falls below that level.
That's correct.
So the water source would be on-site and I think we've always assumed there's apparatus that would siphon the water from whatever that source is to get it applied on any fire, but if, again, if the Board wants to clarify that in Condition 18, that would be the place where I think that would probably fit best to clarify.
We suggest some words to them or, is anyone from the festival here to speak? So would it be appropriate to, I mean, can we do this wording today, Dave, or?
Certainly can. You could do it right now. You could direct, we could indicate that included with this Condition 18 and the on-site water requirement, is that there be the appropriate fire apparatus to apply the water to any fire that might, you know, were on-site?
How about that the Fire Chief or whoever the fire person is verifies that?
Sure.
That it didn't, we're not trying to make an arduous requirement, it's just being sensitive to the issue and being clear about it, I guess. We heard, the other thing is we heard there would be a few fire extinguishers or something on-site, but that didn't seem like enough if there was, given the kinds of fires we've seen the last few years. So that was just a concern we had.
Yeah, we could certainly indicate that included with this requirement, Condition 18, that there's a necessity to have the appropriate suppression application such that the on-site water can be utilized as approved by the Fire Marshal or the Ben Fire Chief. I'm not sure who's overseeing this one, but.
Okay.
We could add that. I'm sure Kyle could put that in and bring it back later this morning, even if probably...
Yeah, I could certainly add that condition in. Are there any other modifications or questions concerning the conditions?
I just feel like we need to be as prepared always as possible and I, you know, probably nothing is going to happen, but it's always better to be prepared. And we're talking about a lot of people being there and camping and everything, so sometimes things get out of control.
You know, and I guess the other, we obviously heard some negative comments from a couple of neighbors. There was also some positive from some neighbors and I think, I'm sympathetic that if it's really as disruptive as it's made out to be on their lives or livestock's lives or whatever, that it'd be nice to not do that, but if, I assume what's going to happen is we'll continue to monitor safety, noise, et cetera, like we have in prior years, public security, et cetera. And I, but we haven't really heard of violations that were at least rose to any enforceable kind. I still would wish there was a way we could move it somewhat to the west, but I guess the landowners not wanted to do that, so it doesn't appear that we can require that, so. Or if, I mean, I'm not trying to make it less effective for, as a concert venue, but more as a, just less annoying to, or whatever to neighbors, so. But other than that, I think we're in a position where we, like the sound issue, we made an offer of, you know, hearing the sound and I think the point was that the C range is different than the A range and we should hear that, but the rules are the rules, so I'm not sure how that impacts our decision-making. Is that what you understood as well?
Right. That the decibel range is, it is monitored, correct?
Correct.
You know, we'll just have to make sure.
It seems like the place where if someone really wanted to change the ability to do this, it's kind of a legislative change in Salem where the legislature would have to say activities are, have different setbacks or have different requirements or allowed on different parcels. I mean, this seems to meet the rules of the current legislation and statutes, so that's my feeling. Is that, yep?
So then Kyle will go ahead and make that proposed language change. Maybe shoot it to me by email, we'll wordsmith it and then you can bring it back here later this morning.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions or comments?
No, I just think, you know, monitoring the sound is important, but we didn't set that rule, so.
Okay. All right.
Thank you. So that concludes our deliberations on item number seven, which will be brought back to us sometime when it's convenient. So now we'll move on to reconsideration of administrative determination for a marijuana production facility located at 60148 Sterling Drive Bend. It's a matter we've heard and actually rendered a judgment on previously, but it's been with, it was appealed to Luba and then we've withdrawn the appeal to, I guess, reconsider some of the facts, so Izzy will explain to us the procedure for today.
Chair, let's begin with the hearing opening process.
Okay. Okay, this is the time and place set for hearing on file number 247-19-000844-RC. Staff will outline the hearing procedure that will be followed.
The hearing's body, the Board of County Commissioners in this case, will take testimony and receive written evidence concerning a reconsideration of an administrative determination. The address of the property is 60148 Sterling Drive in Bend. The applicant, Tommy Nemzow, is requesting approval of an administrative determination to allow recreational marijuana production facility. All testimony shall be directed to the hearing's body. At the conclusion of this hearing, the hearing's body will deliberate towards a decision or continue the hearing or deliberations to a date and time certain. The hearing will proceed as follows. Staff will provide a brief report. The applicant will present its testimony and evidence. The appellant will present its testimony and evidence. Opponents and proponents will present their testimony and evidence. And any other interested persons will then present testimony or evidence. The applicant, as the party bearing the burden of proof, will then be afforded an opportunity to present rebuttal testimony. If requested by the hearing's body, staff will provide closing comments. A full written version of the hearing procedures is available at the table at the side of the room. Commissioners must disclose any ex parte contacts, prior hearing observations, biases, or conflicts of interest.
Does any Commissioner have anything to disclose and if so, please state the nature of the same and whether you can proceed.
I have none.
I have been by the property site, but I have none.
Yeah, I've been, well, we've obviously heard all the evidence previously, so we've had some interaction with witnesses. We, and I was drove by the site prior to the last hearing or after it to see, but I didn't speak to anybody when I was out there, so. Does any party want to challenge any Commissioner based on ex parte contacts, biases, or conflicts? Okay, hearing no objections. The hearing is now open and staff will proceed with a brief staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner. For the record, my name is Izzy Liu, Associate Planner with the Deschutes County Planning Division. In front of the Board today is a proposal for a marijuana production facility located at 60148 Sterling Drive. The applicant is proposing to establish the use within an 1,800-square-foot rigid structure and is proposing an 1,800-square-foot mature plant canopy area. The subject property is located approximately four miles southeast of Bend city limits. The subject property is approximately 17 acres and zoned exclusive farm use zone. As shown on the zoning map, the areas in the orange, brown, and tan are properties zoned exclusive farm use and the properties shown in red are zoned rural residential. To provide some brief land use history, the initial public hearing was conducted on June 26th. At the applicant's request, the public hearing was continued to July 24th. After the open record period and deliberations, the application was ultimately denied on October 2nd. The applicant submitted a notice of intent to appeal to the county on October 23rd and following the appeal, the county submitted the notice of withdrawal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. These issues were raised during the public hearing on July 24th as well as during the open record period. The first issue raised, separation distance from youth activity center, was the previous basis for denial. The other issues raised include screening, fencing, odor control, noise, secure waste disposal. The last decision did not include findings related to these issues, but during today's public hearing, everyone has an opportunity to submit new evidence and testimony related to these issues or bring up new issues for the Board to now reconsider. As part of the record, I've also included two documents to the Board this morning. The first document is a comment from Sheriff Nelson and the second document is the Luba Order based on wave sear for reference. So today's December 11th, obviously the public hearing. If the Board decides to leave the record open, the open record period is typically 21 days. This is a snapshot of what the 21-day open period would look like if the Board decides to go with the standard amount of days. I recognize that the end of the rebuttal period and the applicant's final argument would end on a holiday, so we could certainly manipulate these dates if necessary. The county has 90 days from the date in which the notice of withdrawal was submitted to Luba, therefore the final decision must be issued by February 6th. And that's it for my brief overview. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Okay, so typically, this is a little bit different because we've heard a lot of evidence already and made a decision, so we're here to kind of hear new information. Does all of the record from the previous hearings, is it all part of this record for today also?
That's correct.
So when we make decision, we'd be looking back at the, we have the entire briefing book, plus anything we gained today.
That's correct.
So I was thinking about with timeline, or usually on something like this, the first go-around, we give 30 minutes for each, the applicant and the opponent. I wonder, maybe just take a kind of a census of kind of how much time each of you think you need, because I don't know how many of the issues they're going to address or how much new information. Michael, do you have any thought on how much time would be adequate for your?
I don't think we'll need more than 15 minutes.
15 minutes, okay. Liz, are you speaking for the?
I'm, I'm 15 minutes.
Okay, so what we'll do then is we'll have 15 minutes for both the applicant and the opponents and then individuals can speak their, the normal three minutes. If you're planning to speak at the hearing, other than being the applicant or the named opponents, please fill out a blue form up here and give it to Sharon. One of the, if, I suppose everyone here is real knowledgeable about what kind of precipitated this, but if you aren't, one of the challenges we've had is in the definition and the use of the idea of a youth activity center, which was what we've kind of reined, weighed in on, on the last decision point, so I assume that'll be some part of the decision today as well as the other things which we didn't actually get to, if that's right, so. Any other opening comments or questions?
Just acknowledging that, yeah, this is a response to a previous application and there's a paragraph right at the end of a Luba, is this a remand, yeah, sent back to us, so just childcare center, facility, just the words, you know, kind of kicked this back to us as this decision had been published, so that left us open for this discussion.
I think this is the, actually the wave sear decision.
Yeah, I'm acknowledging that this is another decision is what put it.
Yeah, I brought this up because it had interpreted the same language, yeah, so good point. And so we're, if you're not aware of that, there was another decision on another marijuana grow application involving youth activity center, which was, is what we're referring to as the wave sear decision, so that was, has been provided to us and that's some of what we're dealing with today in this hearing, so. Okay, so any other comments or?
No.
Okay. And we'll have the applicant, why don't you join us and state your name for the record and welcome.
Morning Commissioners. Michael Hughes here with Mr. Nemzow regarding this application. I'm not going to go over a lot because we had a hearing in the past. Obviously, what brings us back here is the, is the wave sear, wave sear, is it?
Wave sear.
Wave sear, wave sear decision. And I believe if the decision is read, it certainly applies to this particular case. It appeared to me that that was the real issue, was the youth activity center in this case. I don't believe the, I believe the odor control, the noise, that was all addressed by a pretty comprehensive engineer's report and the secure waste disposal and screening is something that certainly Mr. Nemzow can do according to the county's directions with regard to that. But with regard to the wave sear decision, clearly they point out several things that I've been pointing out for some time now and that is, the first thing they pointed out is that DCC 18-116-330-sub-B, sub-7, sub-A, sub-4 is not consistent with 475B-486. It's not consistent with the comprehensive plan for preserving farmland in Oregon and it certainly is, is an impediment to people who want to farm on their EFU land. The youth activity centers... The youth activity centers, as they're really not defined by the county code, are unreasonable, and that's what Luba said with the wave seer decision. They also noted that youth activity centers are not a permitted use under the Deschutes County Code. They're not a permitted use, they're not a conditional use, they're not any identified use under the code. They're just a term that was put out by these regulations with no supportive definition. And ultimately, the reason Luba found they were so unreasonable, and why many people find them unreasonable, is that nobody knows how to identify a youth activity center. None of my clients can actually come to me and go, "Hey, Mr. Hughes, what's a youth activity center?" We have no guidance. We have no definitions under the code. We have no way of knowing that. In this particular case, the appellant's going to claim the swimming pool is a youth activity center. And yet, they're not going to be able to provide any proof that that pool was built, constructed, or had any sort of permission from the county to be built or constructed to be used as a youth activity center. And so, this is kind of what Luba warned us about, was having this definition so broad and ambiguous that people can come up and try to make a youth activity center out of whatever's going on on their property. And it's pretty clear that the Luba in footnotes and in the decision itself, especially when they cited Representative Ken Helm during the, I think that was 2015 legislative session, I was sitting there when Ken Helm made the statement, and the fact that Luba cites it, I think, is pretty pertinent because Representative Helm said, "A reasonable regulation is not a regulation that allows the county to come and prohibit marijuana production on EFU land." That's essentially what Ken Helm said. And his, his words have been ignored. And Luba was, was wise enough to mention that as part of legislative history. And that's kind of what's going on here, is we're using parts of the code to eliminate farming on EFU land. And as I mentioned, in doing so, with regard to this youth activity center, the applicants have no way of identifying these youth activity centers. We have no way of going and looking on the county's records to see if they applied for a youth activity center, or if they applied to do these things. We have no way of determining what the center is. I, I would note that the concurring opinion, and this is probably just stuff that lawyers like to read, where he gets into the noun versus the verb argument in the wave seer case. And that was, I thought that was, I'd never actually looked at it that way, but when I read that, it made a lot of sense. A youth activity center should be a noun, not a verb. And ultimately, I do think there's a pretty big conflict between 475B.526-1A and Oregon statute 215.203 and Oregon statute 475B.486-1G. Because it would seem very difficult when the statutes allow marijuana production on EFU land to then have regulations that essentially prohibit marijuana production on EFU land. And that's a conflict that really hasn't been addressed, although I think Luba, in their footnote, I think it was 12, indicated, I think they want to address that. So I think that's something to be concerned with as well. The way I read this case, if a youth activity center is not a 4-H activity in a, in a riding barn, I don't know how it's going to, a pool on a timeshare is going to be considered a youth activity center. I'm of the opinion that in doing so, you would allow farming to be stopped on EFU land, and you would allow it to be stopped by non-farming activities on EFU land. And I'm not sure if that's what everybody had in mind when we're trying to preserve farmland in the state of Oregon. And so therefore, I believe applying the wave seer decision to these facts in this case, I think the, the board should strongly reconsider their decision and ultimately approve this application.
I have a couple of questions. The statutes that you cited, you know, is conflicting, are those in your prior letters or arguments, or would that be something you could provide us now, you know, now that I didn't write?
Yeah, I'm not sure if I addressed those directly. It was based on kind of what Luba had argued a little bit in the wave seer case. I think I've probably cited to them in the past because, you know, the one is the statute that just allows the marijuana production on EFU.
Yeah, maybe just get, I mean, you cited several in a row and saying they're conflicting. It'd be nice to just have them all in a, you know, list, not right now, but sometime. So I have a question for you. Clearly, the statute does allow certain activities to kind of shut down marijuana grows on farmland, or the way you said it, disallow farming. If that was a school that was next door, or a daycare next door, those are, would you be arguing that that, that's not a prohibition, or they're not a valid prohibition against the?
I believe state statute covers those. So in other words, they're covered by state statute. I think the conflict is between the state statute that says EFU is where we want marijuana production.
Right.
And then the county code that basically allows it to be, in this particular case, knocked out by youth activity center.
But, well, you're.
The schools and the daycares kind of follow the federal law that's always kind of had those thousand-foot buffers. Now, it used to be for sentencing purposes.
Right.
But they've kind of followed that same kind of pattern as we want the separation between a school and marijuana.
It's just never, it's not a secret, either, that's been a thing that we've talked about a little bit. Well, if those type activities would act as a preventing farming, why wouldn't a other, we're calling, it's called a youth activity center in our stat, our ordinance, but another place where youth gather and use something intensively like they do a daycare or a school, why wouldn't that have equal standing?
I think it might if it was clearly defined.
What's that?
I think it might if it was clearly defined. Like, a licensed daycare, I can go online and find out where those are at.
Yeah.
A school, I can find out where that's at. An undefined youth activity center, it's a little hard for an applicant to figure out what that is and where it is. So I think if it was defined more, it could be reasonable.
Other questions?
No questions.
Ms. Derr?
No.
All right. Does, does your applicant want to say anything, or?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, Governor.
All right, thanks. All right. And then I guess you'll have also rebuttal, I think, at the end?
Yeah, and then we, we don't object to the proposed timelines that were presented either.
Okay. All right, so we'll next have the Ms. Dixon and the opponents, I think, will have 15 minutes.
Forgive me, we're way down this record.
Yep, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Should I give this to you or Adam?
Thank you for asking.
Let's pick this one. Oh, I missed your visit. Thank you.
Just in case we need record. All right. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Liz Dixon. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Dixon-Hatfield here in Bend, and I represent the appellant, Keith and Kristen Adams. This is an unusual situation. We are in a situation where this, this decision was made, the application was denied. A related application was appealed to Luba and decided, that being the wave seer case. And some of the issues in wave seer, and in this case, are related. So when Luba remanded the wave seer case back to Deschutes County, the county was faced with the decision of deciding what to do about the Nemzo decision, where the Nemzo decision had some of the same issues, and Luba had issued very specific findings about their concerns. And we knew some of those were in the Nemzo case. It was therefore reasonable for the county to withdraw the Nemzo decision that had been appealed to Luba but not heard, to bring it back, fix the findings, address the issues that Luba had identified, and make a better, stronger decision that more clearly identified what the board's intent was in, in making the determination. So that's where we are. It seems to me that key in determining where we go next is to start by looking at the wave seer case and looking at where they're similar and where they're not, and then taking from that the lessons that apply in this case and figuring out how to make the decision better. So what you have in front of you is just that. I, I did not address any of the previous issues. I ask you to carry them forward, we'll talk about what they are. We are asking for a complete decision from this board, not just a decision based on Yak buffer, because I think there is the possibility that, based on a few remarks made by Lubin that wave seer decision, they're looking for a way to kick out that buffer issue in its entirety. So I would ask that this decision not just stop with the buffer, but also look at the other issues as well, which we will discuss. The application, or the packet that you have in front of you includes a more detailed explanation of my remarks, which I will not read to you, but it also includes some exhibits which I am going to reference as we go through these remarks. So I would ask that you look at them and feel free to make notes to them, because both the recording secretary and Izzy have clean copies, and Adam. All right. So the wave seer decision is a somewhat unusual decision in that it is a decision of first impression, okay? They haven't looked at Deschutes County's marijuana code before, and so we got a lot of feedback. On the second page of the narrative that I've provided to you is a table. In all of this, I'm trying to make this as simple as I possibly can. What Luba said in their reasoning was a sort of a four, a four-rung ladder, all right? The first thing they said was that the, the youth, the youth activity center, which we're going to call Yak for ease, that the definition that you made in your interpretation was so amorphous and uncertain that they concluded it was unreasonable. Amorphous and uncertain is what they said. They then said that because it was so amorphous and uncertain, that an applicant couldn't foresee whether their application would be approved or not. And because they couldn't foresee whether their application would be approved or not, it's unreasonable, and because it's unreasonable, it doesn't comply with the statute. Now, they didn't say it in that order, but that's the only logical way that you can put the four rungs together. So the definition is amorphous and uncertain, therefore, the applicant can't foresee whether their application's going to be approved, therefore, it's unreasonable, therefore, you violate state statute. So if we address the first two issues, the definition being so amorphous and uncertain, and applicant foreseeability, we no longer defy the state statute, according to Luba's analysis. So on the right-hand side of the table is what I, what I propose we do today. I propose that we talk about a definition that could be used, and I have in here an idea for how to do that, that's very specific, that's concise, that somebody at Luba can read and see and understand your intent, and also talk about the foreseeability of the applicant. And in this case, we have, count them, 43 years of permits that have been specifically granted to Sundance Meadows Ranch for everything, from swimming pools to horseback riding to trails. Respectfully, if the applicant didn't take a look at the land use, the public record land use permits available on the surrounding properties to their property so that they couldn't foresee that this was coming, I don't think that responsibility is on you. I think, I think it's the responsibility of an applicant to search the public record and determine for themselves what is and isn't permitted on adjoining properties. And this property has 43 years of history of specific permits, talk about recreational activities, recreational community, recreational center. I suggest that it's reasonable to conclude that that might fall into the county's intent when they said they don't like them yes, next to youth activity centers. The second table that's in my document is easier to read, it's shorter. It just talks about facts, and that's something we as lawyers do as a matter of course, but especially in land use, because you have to look at the facts from one case to another. How are they analogous, how are they not? How are we comparing apples and apples, and how are we comparing apples and oranges? And in this case, the wave seer case had a site that was zoned EFU. This has a site that's zoned EFU, but surrounding uses are different. The surrounding uses in wave seer are all EFU, and the surrounding uses included a recreational ranch and a subdivision, and the subdivision's zoned RR10. That should be a significant sign to any applicant looking at a possible parcel of land that they might propose for development. This has got some problems. That subdivision right next to it and that recreational ranch right next to it make this an unusual parcel, and it's reasonably foreseeable that a person would anticipate some problems. The use is the same, they're both an indoor marijuana production facility, and in the wave seer case, the neighboring Yak uses were unpermitted and unlicensed. As I've discussed a little bit here today, that is definitely not the case in this case. In this case, if you look at exhibit nine in your packet, you, which is, you will find, on the front page is the actual dial document sheet, which makes it easy for you to track. And I highlighted the one that we're going to talk about, the notice of decision that we're going to talk about, which is the most recent review of the recreational uses at Sundance Meadows Ranch. You'll note, there's no appeal, so this is good law. Right behind it are the findings of the decision of the 2008 declaratory ruling that lays out the extensive list of the activities on Sunset, on Sundance Mountain Ranch that show clearly what was going on on that location. On page two, it talks about some of the activities, lodge and bunkhouse, recreation meeting hall, swimming pool, dry sauna building, horse stables, riding facilities, an employee house, pool camp hosts, campground, private airstrip, small fishing lake, RV and equipment storage. Next page, miniature golf, brisbee, disc golf, golf driving range, horseshoe pit, archery range, remote control car track and tennis court. This is just one short list in this decision, which is one of 43 years' worth of decisions permitting recreational activity on the subject property. This is the most significant fact distinguishing the Nemzo application from the wave seer application. This is why an applicant could reasonably foresee that they're heading for trouble, as in this case they were. Trying to put my packet back together, keep it all straight. Okay. There is an important fact that we need to discuss in the Luba case, and it's on page three of my notes. Luba, as is sometimes their inclination, shows signs of judicial activism. And in my opinion, that's.
Signs of what did you?
Judicial activism.
Judicial, okay.
That's, and in my opinion, that's the case here. What they said on page 19, in two locations, and in the, in the concurring opinion by Member Ryan, they essentially say, "By the way, nobody asked, but we doubt whether you can ever restrict anybody from growing marijuana from EFU land anywhere in the state of Oregon." That's, that's a real short synopsis of what they said. But in three different locations, that's, that's what they said, and I laid it out in my document. I find it very interesting that they would, they would throw that curve ball into this decision, because no one specifically asked the question. But aside from that, the second, and I think more important point is, the legislature has already said that if you want to opt out, in your entirety, you can. the legislature has already said that if you want to opt out in your entirety, you can, which is a much larger option of a city or a county to say, "No, thank you", than just saying, "I want to enforce the time, place, and manner rules." If Luba is here saying, "You might not have the right to enforce the time, place, and manner rules, but, oh, by the way, we recognize the legislature likes you to opt out entirely", those two arguments are logically inconsistent. And while I'm not prepared to go into any detail here, and I don't think it's appropriate in this forum to talk about whether Luba did this right or wrong, what I do want to say is, that argument is there. I think it needs to be kind of segmented off, set aside, put on a shelf, and left for the Court of Appeals or the Supreme Court or the legislature to decide. Because whether Luba was right or wrong in that regard is not for today. But it's in there, attorney Hughes referenced it. It would be negligent of me not to at least address it, but I'm letting you know, that's the way I intend to handle it. I don't think it's for this forum to decide whether Luba was right or wrong in going against the legislature in their interpretation. All right. On page four of my notes is a new way of looking at youth activity center definition. And what I'm proposing here is that you put together a list of factors that you can use as an evaluation method. And you can say that that factor is present in a particular case, or it's not present, or we're not sure. But you can go through a list of factors, similar to what we do in kind of an EC analysis, where you don't look for every single thing in every single case, but you look through a list of factors. And the factors that I'm suggesting here are things like: a separate building or area for use; a youth recreation activity accommodated on a regular basis; adult supervision provided; specific toys, games, or equipment available for the activity; permitted or licensed activities; organized group activities; school-related activities; usage, and I threw in a number here, frequency or number of participants exceeds the usual EFUs by fifty percent or more; use observable from neighboring properties; center open to the public. These are all factors that I found in previous discussions that the board has had in previous youth activity center cases. And so I thought they might be relevant here. But this isn't intended to be what I think you should do, it's intended to be a starting point. And I would encourage you to come up with some definition, and this is just one alternative. The Deschutes County justification for a youth activity center buffer, I think, is really important. As I read the Luba decision, the impression I got was that they thought you were faking it. The impression I got was that they thought you really just didn't like marijuana, and you were looking at this as a way to say, "No". And so the argument that I think would be appropriate in this case is to more carefully illustrate to them what your intent is in putting a youth activity center buffer in place. I looked at the legislative history when I was looking for the original definition of youth activity center, and I didn't find a really developed body of work in your legislative history explaining why you're doing this. And I'm offering as an alternative, it might be helpful to provide to Luba and anybody else who's looking, a clear explanation of why you think it's important to have a youth activity center buffer. So, included in the materials are a number of independent articles on marijuana in teens, your kid's brain on pot, implications of marijuana legalization for adult substance abuse, all authoritative sources, all heavily annotated. And as we suspected, I think as we kind of all know, what we've learned is that a not fully-developed brain, a pre-age twenty-five brain, is a brain that is affected by marijuana usage in a way that can permanently affect it. And what they say in these articles is that it can lower IQ by as much as eight points for the rest of their lives. So the articles are in here, if you're interested in them, they're here available for your review. But I think it's helpful to provide rationale to Luba and anybody else who's interested why you're doing this, why it's important to you, what your intent is. Because the sense I got from the wave seer decision was that they questioned your motives. And so I think it's important to be clear on intent. I also spent a significant amount of time looking at relevant legal precedents. Where do we have other examples of cases where there is a harm to youths, and we're trying to figure out a way to separate them from that harm, from that risk? And though it seems radical, the only thing I could, excuse me, the only thing I could come up with was sex offenders. Sex offenders are a risk to youths. And the way we deal with sex offenders is by keeping them separate from youths. And so what I've included in your material is surveys that show the twenty-one states, as of 2007, that did this buffering method, as a way to separate youths from sex offenders, youths from risk. And there are even examples in here of states that talked about places where children congregate. So they would say, "Schools, or daycare centers, or places where children congregate". And so it's analogous, it's similar. While I recognize marijuana and sex offenders aren't the same, the idea of risk to youths and how you deal with that risk may be helpful. Lastly, the unique characteristics of Sundance Meadows Ranch as a youth activity center are included in my written materials. It's important to note that it is a domestic nonprofit corporation, the documents are in the packet. It is open to the public for events. I've included five different events last year alone where the public came. It does host community organizations, including Equine Outreach, and there's a letter from Equine Outreach saying, "Please don't put a marijuana facility next to us". And the NEMSO property has been improved. They've built a hemp farm, the building is on-site, and the photos are in your packet. Please deny the application. The one thing that the applicant argued, or, excuse me, that staff argued, were the arguments that we raised before that need to be carried forward. There was one that was missed, and I think it may be the biggest one. And that is, this is new code. When an applicant applies under new code, before it's been acknowledged, they have responsibility to comply with the Oregon Administrative Rules, the Oregon Revised Statutes, and the statewide planning goals. The applicant never sufficiently addressed this argument. This is under new code. The new code, the statute says, and it's in my materials, you have to go back and address those things if LCDC hasn't blessed it for you. And they haven't done that. And I would argue that that needs to be done in this case.
Other specific items they're saying they haven't addressed, or-
Yes, and if you look in my older materials, it's in my first appellate submittal that I can provide. I actually took a picture of the actual statute, and it's included in the materials. Any questions?
Briefly, before you ask questions, this is Kevin Nashan. He's the ranch manager of Sundance Meadows Ranch. So if you have anything specific to put down, easier to-
Well, a couple of things, if we end up having an open record period, that I guess would interest me. We have quite a bit of information on the swimming pool, the use of the pool, how close it is, et cetera. And then we had this idea that, well, the whole Sundance Meadows Ranch could almost be considered a youth activity center because there's so many different activities. But I think if we were to ever go down that trip, we didn't really rely on that, but we did mention it. But if we're going to end up at Luba again, it'd be nice to actually have some distances on those things, and frequency of use, et cetera. I happen to agree with some of what you're saying is that, and I guess I felt we were trying to define it, but we've never really set up a definition of what a youth activity. But frequency of use, you know, a number of users, those kinds of things, we're kind of in, that's what differentiated sometimes when it's been brought up versus the other. But I don't really have a sense of those things with regard to the ranch activities itself, so-
The good news is, you already dealt with it. If you take a look at your new code, the new code has a definition of how you measure a youth activity center. And the staff report is a little bit vague on this, but it's already in the record, and I can put it back in again if you want, if you don't want to go looking for it.
But you're suggesting some other factors, right?
Well, no, what I'm suggesting is that when you measure for Yak buffer, it has to be thirteen-hundred-and-twenty feet between the two property lines, not between the two events. So in the original code, it had to be thirteen, it had to be a thousand feet, the wave seer code. It had to be a thousand feet from the actual improvements that are the production or processing facility and the property line of the Yak property. So it was property line to improvements before, and it was a thousand feet. But when you rewrote the code, you changed it. And when you rewrote the code, you said, "Now, it's thirteen-hundred-and-twenty feet, a quarter-mile, between the property line of the marijuana facility and the property line of the Yak facility." So if you find youth activity center anywhere in Sundance Meadows Ranch, it doesn't matter where it is on the ranch, you measure between the property lines, and they're right next to each other.
Questions, Commissioner Dyer?
Interesting how you had analyzed what Luba said to us. You know, coming in, the youth activity center, lack of definition. You know, I can see what you're saying, and it is something that, you know, you're saying now that we have it better defined in the new code? No.
No, the new code doesn't define youth activity center.
So it's something we need to work on?
Sorry, yeah, I think so.
Yes.
Well, and you know, this is part of what I agreed with, with one thing that Luba said, is that it should be reasonably, if you own property next to it, you should be able to say, "That's likely to be a youth activity center". It's not the same as a daycare center or school where you can see the front door and the flag exactly. But that's what we've tried to say before, so coming up with more specifics would be important. I think also, you made the argument about the permitted activities, forty-three years of permitted activities. That's never been really raised to us before. But the issue's been, well, this is a licensed youth activity center. Well, we've kind of just decided there isn't anything such as that, so that doesn't really work. But there are, you're saying there's things that have been permitted on this property that do take it to a higher standard than maybe a 4-H club or something.
Quite a bit higher. If you look at exhibit nine, and you read through Cynthia Schmidt's decision from 2018, you will see a very clear description of forty-three years of, they call it in here, a recreational community. On page four, they say, "The recreational community includes a variety of camping and recreational facilities", and then they list them again. There are lists all through this document. Anybody who looks at the public record on the adjoining properties of the NEMSO property will find this. And they don't even have to dig deep, it's a 2018 decision.
So you're equating recreation, family-based recreation, to youth activity center. I mean, this seems like it's extending what you want to happen, obviously, but recreation, we have recreation on this property, so let's call it a youth activity center. There's just a big step there for me, it looks like.
I understand the words are not the same. If you read through that exhibit nine decision, you will see many examples of recreational activities on the site that are commonly understood to be youth-based. And while Cynthia Schmidt, in her decision, clearly said, you know, "This is a non-conforming use. This is not something that we normally have", so it's not going to help us in other marijuana applications. This is kind of a unique situation. But right now, we're dealing with this situation. And I think that if you come up with a list of factors, or however you decide you want to define it, that could or could not incorporate a youth activity center, almost all the factors I listed there happen to be in this facility, though I pulled the factors from old Yak deliberations that you had done.
So you're asking for a narrow definition relative to this property in this application? Because I'm thinking the rest of the rural county, you know, EFU, somebody lives next door, there's activities on any residential-style property, and we have rural residential MU A-10 next to EFU in many places around the county. So I'm just trying to get clarity, and, you know, is this going to give us a definition that can be used around the county?
No, what I'm suggesting is that the factor table that I threw in as a place to start was based on old youth activity center deliberations you've done, all the kinds of things you've talked about that you were looking for. I'm not asking you to define it unique to this property. I'm asking you to write a definition, and then based on that definition, take a look at whether it applies in this property. It's sort of a two-step process. Sorry if I wasn't clear.
Oh, no, I'm just trying to get my thoughts out there, too.
Any other thoughts, comments, questions?
No, not at this time.
All right, well, thank you. And I'm sorry I refer to you as the opponents as opposed to the appellants.
Oh, it doesn't, yeah. No problem.
All right. So anyone that wants to testify on this matter, I've got what-
These two are part of the appellant group, and I think they want to speak briefly.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
But I'll get out of the way.
And if there's anybody else, I only have one other request to speak, which is from Lori Aldridge. If there's anybody else that wants to speak today, we need to fill out a blue form over there and hand it in to Sharon over here. Yeah, go ahead.
I don't think I have too much to add, other than to address your issue a little bit in that, see this tendency towards saying that a youth activity center has to only be youth. The fact of the matter is that almost any youth activity that occurs, whether it be on a piece of ground, at a center, whatever, has family there quite frequently, almost always, as part of their own supervision. So if it's a park, kids don't go to play at the park, they usually have their parents there with them. So be careful about trying to narrow this so narrow that you make it inconsistent with other things, like not having a marijuana grow next to a park. So, by two cents.
I think this case is-
Do you want to give your name for the record also?
My name is Kevin Nashan. I am the ranch manager for Sundance Meadows. For us, it's really unique. We have, like she said, we've been here for forty-three years. We definitely have clear boundary lines of our property. We have currently, I believe, five-hundred-and-seventeen owners, which that includes family, extended family. If you're an owner, you can bring as many guests as you like. You can use the facilities to host wedding anniversaries, birthday parties, which the owners do. We have owners from across the world. When they're here, they like to do whatever they like to do, and they're free to do it within our boundaries. I'm currently working, still working, with Cynthia from your office as far as the non-conforming use. We're doing a verification of events that are not included in that currently. And it is our intention to do in addition to those grandfather rights, showing events that we've done in the past forty-three years. She's, you know, she's mentioned that we are so unique that it is difficult for them, so we're hoping to help set the standard for the county of a non-conforming use so we don't have to be here every time to do a permit, whereas we've always done these things, they've accepted we're a non-conforming use. We are also in the process of applying for a type-three agrotourism permit, which allows us eighteen more public events per year. And those will include, basically, we're open to all ideas. School dances has been suggested. We have owners that are teachers. We have owners for Deschutes County Sheriff's Department. They've considered holding private events there that wouldn't be so received well in the public. This may be a place for those events. I think we're really established here, so hopefully you can take that into consideration.
What's the zoning of the ranch, the land use zone?
It is EFU. So, again, with the non-conforming use, we have multiple pastures. Total, we have a little over nine-hundred acres. Some of that acreage is seven miles separate from the original property and managed by BLM. You know, the way things were in the seventies, they are definitely not the way they are now. So that is my intention, to continue working with the county. Some things are going to have to change, absolutely. We all know change is inevitable, and, you know, things are growing. Marijuana has totally changed in the last few years. And it's, we want to be good neighbors. We want to support all of our neighbors in what they're doing, unless it has a negative impact on what we're doing.
And for the agrotourism application, what's the agricultural activity on the property?
So we do farming. We'd like to include horses, you know, additional animals, hay. You know, I'm working with the Noxious, I want to say his name is Keith as well, for the Noxious Weeds program. You know, make it a training center. We have, you know, OSU. They have the campus there, so we've talked about using the property in as many beneficial ways as possible because we can. Being a nonprofit, being private the way we are, we want to make it as beneficial to the community as possible.
Thank you.
How long have you been with them, Kevin?
I've been the manager for a little over a year.
Anything further? Thanks for coming today and.
We appreciate your testimony.
Thank you all.
So, next testimony is from Lori Aldridge. And again, as I've said before, if anybody else wants to testify, please fill out a blue form, give it to Sharon. I don't have any other forms up here, so this will be our last, other than a rebuttal, so.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Lori Aldridge. I'm an owner at Sundance Meadows Ranch. I'm also here with Kevin Naishand, our ranch manager at Sundance Meadows. I would like to read to you this morning a statement from our Sundance Meadows President, Dee Schultz. And her letter reads, "Commissioners, my name is Dee Schultz. I am the President of the Board of Directors of Sundance Meadows, Inc. I regret and apologize that I cannot attend the December eleventh, two thousand nineteen hearing. Kevin Naishand, the Sundance Meadows Ranch Manager, and Lori Aldridge, an owner, are here to represent us and our membership, to answer any questions on our behalf. They have our full confidence and support representing our residential community. The Sundance Meadows Ranch Board, and I understand that you have withdrawn for reconsideration your previous decision denying approval of the proposed marijuana grow next to Sundance Meadows Ranch and Sundance subdivision. We would like to reiterate that Sundance Meadows Ranch continues to be opposed to the approval of this application. We continue to be in support of Keith and Kristen Adams' pursuit of this application's denial on behalf of both Sundance Meadows Ranch and Sundance subdivision. Sundance Meadows Ranch is, as you know by now, a not-for-profit recreational ranch with a hundred, with five hundred and seventeen active owning members, representing roughly fifteen hundred people. Sundance Meadows Ranch is a recreational destination for its members and guests, including all their children, grandchildren, and guests. As our members have become informed of the potential of a marijuana grow next to the ranch, they have expressed their concerns of marijuana growing in such close proximity to their children's play areas while at the ranch. The location of the proposed marijuana grow is a very short distance due south of the key youth recreational facilities at Sundance Meadows Ranch, our pool and court area. We have a high volume of children and families that enjoy these facilities during the vacation season. In addition, we have other youth activity facilities throughout the ranch, and we have youth that have explored the property supervised both on foot and horseback as part of both supervised and unsupervised activity and events at the ranch. The marijuana grow represents a possible attraction to those same Sundance Meadows Ranch youth and youth from Sundance subdivision that may result in harm to them. Our membership and guests do not want their children exposed to marijuana without parental supervision and consent. We would like to reiterate, we feel that a facility that produces marijuana is not appropriate to our recreational ranch. I and the Sundance Meadows Board of Directors and the members of our board represents, once again, urge you to please deny this application. Best regards, Dee Schultz."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to turn that letter in to?
Yes, I have a copy of the letter.
Thanks, Lori.
Okay, thank you so much.
So is there anyone else that wanted to speak that hasn't gotten a form in yet? If not, then we'll go ahead with rebuttal, Mr. Hughes and Nemzo.
Commissioners, I'll make this short. I just want to address a few of these things and then obviously request the record. We kept open so we could maybe supplement some of the information based on what was said today. The first thing is, we can't just make up a definition right in the middle of a process. And we're even far beyond the middle of the process now. We're to the point where a Luba appeal had been filed, and we were about to argue this to Luba. I don't know how we can start making up definitions. I don't know how that would benefit Mr. Nemzo to make up a definition now. This should have been in the code, and then we would have probably not been here, but with regard to the forty-three years of permits, they're all recreational permits. There's nothing in any one of those permits where they claim they're going to be hosting youth activities or hosting the Boy Scouts. This is a, an organization that relies on people to basically buy a time share in it. They were not set up to provide youth services. This is not something that was set up specifically for the Boys Club, the Boy Scouts of America, the Boys and Girls Club, or any other recognized youth organization, 4-H, anything. If you read the Luba case, the activities that were on the adjacent properties and that were related to 4-H, they were actually related to agricultural activities taking place on agricultural land. I believe you, Luba referred to them as accessory to farm use, accessory to residential use. And yet, they still did not find that they were a youth activity center, as they would define it, or having any way to define it, thus it would be unreasonable. And I think that's an important distinction. This is, some of these activities on Sundance may be categorized as accessory to farm use, if it's horseback riding or something along those lines. The rest of the activities can only be defined as recreational. That's why they had to go get permits to do them on EFU land. And I don't think that we can equate a recreational activity with a youth activity. They're just certainly not one in the same. I mean, they can overlap at times, but they're not a specific youth activity. So therefore, I do not think that, that we can, we can equate the two. And, and finally, as far as the new code and the new definitions, I guess it's my understanding that the new code has been withdrawn, and that the county is, that we're not operating under the new code, but if I'm wrong, I certainly will be corrected in that. But it would seem odd that we're arguing about a code that the county has withdrawn because of another Luba appeal, so I'm not, and from my perspective, I'm not going to, I'd rather write and, and do a legal brief on whether or not the thirteen hundred foot is, is a, is a property line to property line or a building to property line standard, so. And that's, that's basically all I'd have. I'd agree to the timelines to extend. Just ask that we be given some time to supplement any potential information.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think that'll conclude our hearing for oral testimony for day. Today, I'd suggest we close that and proceed with the written. Do you want to go over then what the, if we keep the written record open, what the steps would be then?
So the open record.
If possible, Commissioners, can I propose a five-minute recess so I can coordinate with the parties to just make sure? Because open record period is going to extend over the holiday season. I think it's appropriate to work with them and make sure everybody can meet those dates.
Okay.
I'll make it something like five minutes.
Five-minute recess. If we could, we'd like to reconvene the meeting after a short break and see if we can get the timelines for the written record of this matter and complete discussion of that for today. So, Adam?
Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Smith, Assistant Legal Counsel. Sorry, I didn't introduce myself before. Izzy and I met with the parties and with the board's consent. The parties have proposed December twentieth for new evidence, January third for rebuttal, and January tenth for final legal argument. That way, we're spreading things out a little bit over the holiday, and we'll give the county three and a half weeks to issue a final decision by the early February deadline. And by, I'm looking at both of the attorneys, and they all consented in the hall. I trust that they'll jump up and object if they disagree with those dates.
Okay, can you say those one more time?
Yes, December twentieth for new evidence, January third for rebuttal, and January tenth for final legal argument from the applicant. And I'm assuming five o'clock deadlines?
Yes, that's correct.
And I'll let Izzy take it from there.
Good, okay.
I think that's it. I just wanted to remind everyone that there are instructions for submitting into the record. So essentially, five PM on those deadline dates, and can be sent electronically. If it's more than twenty pages, I ask that we, we ask that we receive a hard copy.
And certainly don't wait until five o'clock. Don't wait until four fifty-nine on those dates. The county's system needs to receive it by the deadline, and so give yourself a margin of error.
Great, great. Anything else, Dave, that we need to?
Sir, you've got it all.
All right, well, that completes item number eight on the agenda. Those of you that joined us to hear this testimony today, thank you. We're moving on to another issue. You're welcome to stay or. So we'll, just give them a minute to move. So we'll move on to item number nine, which is deliberations on the split zone pipe canal amendments and consideration ordinance two thousand nineteen dash zero one nine. And Tanya is going to lead us through that.
I feel like every time I always clear the room.
Was that, yeah. It's nothing, nothing you did, nothing you did.
Not as controversial.
Quality, right? For the record, my name is Tanya Saltzman, Associate Planner, Deschutes County. A public, sorry, a public hearing with the board was held, again, that's, on December fourth for the split zone amendments, which are text amendments outlining procedures in the county code for divisions involving split-zone floodplain properties. The entirety of the record was provided to the board for that public hearing, as well as in a binder. At the hearing, two, two parties provided testimony in favor of the amendments, and the board then closed both the oral and the written records, and we are here today for deliberations on ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash zero one nine. One point of, of note, at the time of the hearing, counsel for a property owner respectfully requested consideration of an emergency adoption of this ordinance. This is because staff is not anticipating an appeal, an appeal of this ordinance, and this would afford the property owners, the netters, an opportunity to apply for the partition they've been looking to do in advance of any potential legislative changes that would might, have potential to occur early in next year. So staff offers that for consideration, and in your packets, they're both emergency and non-emergency versions of, of the ordinance. And with that, I open it to the board for questions or discussions.
So I wasn't here for the hearing on the fourth. So having just looked at it, it looks like the. looks like that these definitions or the eligibility and procedures are fairly narrowly drawn for some specific situations. There are situations, in the one case, we've been aware of for at least two years, maybe more than that.
Three.
Three years, yeah, it seems like it's three years, ever since I've been in office, I think. So, I guess, you know, just having looked at it and knowing the background, I'm in favor of this, so.
Yeah, no, I'm real pleased that, you know, it's a narrow definition change, very specific instances, unintended consequences of piping, and the definition of floodplain. And, you know, it's not picking up a bigger issue that we're dealing with, kind of the big picture here, but it definitely solves a specific issue and has a result as intended. I'm supportive.
I move that we...
Oh, there you go.
Yes, this is like, three years is a long time, and it's almost Christmas. So, I move that we approve ordinance number 2019-019 by emergency. Am I supposed to say, I know differently?
Be first and second reading by title only, and including the emergency clause.
Do I need to say by first and second reading and the emergency clause?
May I say it?
Okay. Oh, I have to read it over here, right?
Oh, she did, okay.
That was clear.
Is that clear enough?
You're moving first and second reading by title only of 2019-019, including emergency.
Yes.
So, just legislative history of this process, I've always been hesitant to use emergency declaration. I mean, in this situation, I will be supportive. A question, though, I mean, what appeal rights are still out there for parties?
Still have the standard appeal window to Lupa, so, which is a shorter window than the typical 14 and then 90, so.
Yeah, just if any party's out there, there's still some kind of an appeal process. Knowing that information, I will second her motion.
I had the same concern always with using the emergency order, but this is one of the ones where I think it has been delayed so much as we've tried to work this out that this is where it's really appropriate compared to other options we sometimes. So, I'm supportive also. Any other comments or...
It's a very clear change, you know, very specific, and I do think emergency is appropriate.
So, with that, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Yeah, I had to...
He seconded it.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So, thank you for your patience, Mr. Netter. You're welcome to come back to our meetings anytime. We'll recognize you and see you, but hopefully this will work for what you're trying to achieve. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, you're great.
Just for clarity, the Board Chair does need to read the title indicating its first and second reading, and then there'll need to be a motion for adoption.
Okay, so, I should read that now?
Yep, just read it once. You can indicate its first and second reading.
So, this will be first and second reading of ordinance number 2019-019, an ordinance amending Deschutes County Code Title 18, Deschutes County zoning, and Title 23, the Deschutes County Comprehensive Plan to incorporate provisions related to the division of certain split zoned property containing floodplain zoning and declaring an emergency. I seek a motion adopting this ordinance.
I'll move adoption of ordinance number 2019-019.
And I'll second it.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Now it's complete.
Now it's complete. So, thank you both.
And folks, just so you're clear, what the emergency adoption means is the 21-day clock for anyone to challenge this to Lupa starts now instead of later.
Can I ask one question, Mr.?
Yeah, sure.
Of Dave? That means that we really would be wise to wait the 21 days before putting in an applications up, is you're really saying?
I'll defer to Peter. I don't know that...
We're not anticipating an appeal. Certainly, if you feel like you have the materials to apply, you can go ahead and do that. We have a 30-day completeness check. In the unlikely event that there is an appeal, we work with you. We can give you a refund, we can toll it, but it's really up to you. There's no risk if you initiate early. We'll know during the 30-day completeness check if there is an appeal. So, if you feel like time is of the essence, you can go ahead and apply, but flexibility.
I think we'd be wise to take it under advisement or turn it down.
That's always, yeah, always a good decision.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, that concludes item number nine. We'll move on to item number 10, which is deliberations of the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act. And Peter, I guess, is going to lead this.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. For the record, Peter Gatawski, Deschutes County Planning. Here before you are amendments to Deschutes County Code that bring our comprehensive plan and zoning code into compliance under the Religious Land Use and Institutional Persons Act to treat religious institutions and assemblies on equal terms with what I'll call nonreligious or secular assemblies. And just for context, for anybody who's listening at home, with the Board's direction earlier this year, staff initiated amendments throughout our zoning code in light of a decision from the Land Use Board of Appeals that acknowledged our code was not in compliance with, the acronym is R-LUPA, because we were not, again, treating religious assemblies or institutions on the same equal terms as secular assemblies. So, we audited our code in coordination with legal counsel, initiated an amendment, and most recently, we had a public hearing with the Board of County Commissioners on November 13th. At the time of that hearing, there was no opposition, and the Board found that it was reasonable to close both the oral and written record. For your consideration today, oh, I should back up. Although the record is closed, it's important to acknowledge that Central Oregon Land Watch does have standing. They participated in the planning commission proceedings and have expressed concerns about the amendments. So, I do want to acknowledge that they do have standing, and to the extent that the Board considers and ultimately adopts these amendments, I think we can expect that this issue will go to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Today, as you consider deliberations, staff has brought two items to your attention, and I can give you the, I think the page number is the same, but it starts on your packet that was made available a week ago. The staff called out two potential additions. I have it on page 41 and 42 of your packet. One is to receive direction on the type of definition the Board would like for religious institution and assemblies. One is provides, broadens that definition to be more inclusive, and then there's just a series of other options. And then the second item for your consideration is whether the Board would be supportive to have specific language that will allow the county to apply conditions of approval to religious assemblies or institutions and non, I should say, secular assemblies when they're located in the wildlife area combining zone. For context, a year or two ago, the Board did apply conditions of approval relating to John Shepherd and Shepherd's Field Church, and that was stemming from infrastructure limitations. And the Board, because of infrastructure challenges, didn't grant the full requested days for using the property for weddings and affiliation to the church itself. So, those are the two issues that we wanted some direction on your part. Staff is available for questions. Adam is certainly behind me, who's well-versed in the legal aspects of the proposal, but we are respectfully asking for, you know, consideration of first reading, and if that did occur, we would come back in the new year, January 8th, for consideration of second reading. But in no way am I trying to get ahead of the Board, just giving you a sense of how the calendar could unfold as you consider these amendments.
So, I don't know how much you just, in the prior meeting, or I don't know if you brought it up and discussed it at all, the four definitions, have you kind of gone through?
It's been in the memo previously, so it was out there.
But have you discussed it at all?
No, we haven't discussed it as a Board.
Okay. I didn't know if last week you did. So, one of the, I'd kind of like to walk through the definitions, because I see that some, a lot of the differences, so we can do that. But one overall definition that kind of bothers me is, I've always thought that what we're allowing, if we were allowing it, was a gathering place that has some kind of a structure to it, and it used to be called just a church. Now, it could be called a religious institution. But the word "assembly" kind of bothers me, because I keep picturing, you know, out in the woods, groups of people, and, which is really not what we're permitting, or I didn't think we were permitting, and I don't think that's what we're required to permit. I think it was, if you can have a house here, or if you can have this kind of building here, then you should be able to have a church here, or a synagogue, or other religious one. But, so, just the word "assembly," and I don't know what thought you've had, or if other states that have adopted, or other areas that have adopted that, have thought about that word "assembly." But I always see, we could have an assembly out in the middle of the street, this group here today, if we wanted, and it wouldn't be a, you know, we could do it for an hour, or what, you know. So, that's what I'm, I just wonder what the thought was on "assembly."
And I'll look to Adam to provide any context that I may be leaving out. My understanding is we're incorporating the state's definition, which includes that term, but you may have some additional context.
Yeah, Adam Smith, Assistant Legal Counsel. My computer's booting up. When it does finish booting up, I'll pull the Lupa decision directly, which is kind of what triggered this. And rather than it being the state, it's more coming directly from our Lupa federal law.
They use that in the, our Lupa, those words?
Yes, and we're trying to be more responsive to this broader notion of how property can be used that's in the federal law and was kind of noted directly in Lupa's most recent decision. So, if you bear with me. If there are any other questions, maybe we can address those while I'm pulling up the Lupa decision.
Well, that would be my understanding also, because I understand where you're starting from. We're talking about building a, you know, a structure which we call the church or synagogue, and now we're talking about assemblies. But when, you know, when we're trying to align with federal efforts, it becomes a wording like this. And that was my understanding before.
Then, another question while you're booting up is, a couple of your definitions use the nonprofit status as a qualifier, and a couple don't. I don't know whether it's important to have it or not. I mean, it's...
So, the nonprofit qualifier, it was Deschutes County's mechanism for trying to weed out, is it a church, is it not a church, and that's worked well for us in the past. And we could certainly add that qualifier into any of the definitions. It's, I think it's arguably consistent, because I think lots of different entities, lots of different governmental entities use something on par with that IRS qualifier to determine if something's a church. It's, I think it's a common practice. But at least in the option one, we, option one is casting the widest net possible. It's our past practice. It's incorporating, using the state statutory term, so everybody knows exactly where this is coming from. It's referencing federal law and the federal statute for the exact same reasons. It's trying to cast the widest net to recognize that there are other bodies of law that are influencing this text amendment.
And that's the way I see it, as in, when you read that definition, it says ORS and federal law, so that it gives you the opening to go figure out the context.
And I actually did bring that up the other, last week, I think, when you were here, about, you know, using the IRS, but that is the critical factor. If you have your 501(c)(3), you know, you've got to have your nonprofit, and that does clear out things if they really are a church. So, I think it's important to use the most expansive definition.
So, we're supposed, I guess, kind of pick between these or something? So, they're all different, you know, they're kind of all saying the same thing, but they're trying to say it differently. I kind of like number two, although I would add in two words, but so, well, I'd add two things to it, but religious institution or assembly means the use, building, conversion of real property. I would add the words "or structures" for the purpose of religious exercise as consistent with ORS and with the nonprofit thing. So, that's just a beginning thought. I don't know what everybody else thinks is the most...
Yeah, I go right back to option one, and I've thought about this and talked about it with staff a little bit. It basically is an introductory statement to the big picture, you know, as in, we're going to use the words "institution" or "assembly." We're going to require IRS, and then it refers to the state and the federal, our Lupa. And it does talk about the use of building or conversion of real property for the purpose of religious. So, as I say, I concluded that, yeah, it really does.
I went with option number one also.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
And what was the, in that one, then, what was the specific of non-residential place of worship? Because we specifically have authorized a residential place of worship as a fitting this statute.
The term "non-residential place of worship" is coming directly from ORS 215-441, subsection one, and it's just borrowing that statutory term.
But, you know, I'm saying that we just, we've authorized a non-residential as a church, and we, so, this would, it would no longer qualify, or they'd be the only exception?
There were certainly disagreements on what the term "non-residential place of worship" meant in that case. The idea, I think what the statutory term, and I could pull up the statute as well, if that's helpful, but the statutory term, as I recall, I believe is supposed to be more of a, it was argued that the term "non-residential place of worship" precluded the Shepherd's Field Church from being used in that residential place. Those arguments were made to Lupa. Lupa ultimately didn't agree. Well, Lupa and the Court of Appeals ultimately didn't agree with that interpretation of the term in state statute. And I can't recall if Lupa or the Court of Appeals ever clarified what the term "non-residential place of worship" was meant to be, but my understanding is it was more on par with, oh, I can't remember the term, but like a residential facility for monks, so to speak, or...
Seminary or something?
I'm sorry.
Like a seminary?
Or like the place the Catholics have a...
Yeah, sorry, I'm just blanking on the specific term, but it was...
A retreat?
A retreat kind of facility or something along those lines.
So, it's not non-residential in being somebody's house. It's non-residential meaning this cabins or retreat type thing?
What I could speak to affirmatively is those arguments, at least in the Shepherd's Field matter, were not persuasive to Lupa or the Court of Appeals.
Well, and that whole section consisting with ORS is in brackets. So, it's just, it's a definition.
Well, it was confusing to me, so it'll probably be confusing to other people read that when they're saying, can we do this or not? What that means is confusing, I think, non-residential. So, but I don't have any objections to item or option one. I don't know that there's anything better. It just, it's kind of a long drug-out sentence.
Admittedly, it's...
It covers.
...advocated definition, which is why, and I usually don't advocate for being that specific in our definitions, our code provisions with state law or federal law, because the exact numbers change. I mean, if there's an amendment, then those numbers can change. In this particular case, I put those statutory references in there just to, again, trying to cast a wide net and to make it very clear. This is where, our intention is to treat something that qualifies as a religious or similar institution, anything that qualifies under state law, or anything that qualifies under federal law, state and otherwise. We are doing everything we can to ensure we're consistent with these higher bodies of law and adopting, although admittedly, a long run-on sentence with lots of different parts, including those statutory definitions, or excuse me, including those statutory references so that folks can come in and say, hey, what I am proposing falls under this state or federal definition, and thereby should be included under the county's land use process and scheme.
Okay. Well, so, is there any reason to use one? Okay. Well, so is there any reason to use one of the others, or is, it sounds like we're all good with number one, if that, that works and meets the requirements of our Lupa?
I agree.
Are we good, Adam?
Yes.
Okay. So then it looked like the other question is whether we include this in all the places you've listed it included, right? Is that, I mean, you've got all these different, I don't even want to call them places, where you've used this word, these words. And sometimes you're adding it to a definite, you're changing the definition from church to religious institution, and sometime you're actually adding it as a new use. And so...
Well, let me address the first part, and then I'll turn it over for Peter to address the second. So, and, and actually, that might help provide some more context to the definition. Our original intention was to just, rather than using the word "church," in almost, at least the last couple of briefs I filed with Luba and the Court of Appeals, I was including footnotes to, to acknowledge that church is a term specific to one religious practice, and that we apply this idea of church to broadly, to other things, synagogues, mosques, et cetera. And so, our initial, when we did the code audit, our initial intent was to just broaden the term, and to get away from church, which is one religion-specific, and to use something a little bit more broad. In front of the planning commission, there were some arguments that, hey, the definition that the county came up with could be abused. And so, we took a second look. Well, hey, let's look at the definition more substantively, and that's where we came up with the four options. Ultimately, the planning commission never elected an option, because of course, they didn't recommend approval. So, that was one piece of this text amendment, was to just get away from the overly specific term "church." And then, we also did a code audit to ensure that any place, a public assembly, or something that could be considered a public assembly was being allowed, a church was also being allowed. And we found a couple of instances where they were not, where somebody could make an our Lupa equal terms argument, not the exact one we just dealt with in the Shepherdsfield matter, but in, in other case-specific circumstances that came up later. And so, we proposed some recommendations to address those. I think it's also important to note that none of the testimony, or none of the issues with this amendment have concerned anything other than the wildlife area overlay zone, and is a direct corollary to the quasi-judicial Shepherdsfield matter that we just dealt with. Nobody has testified in opposition, or, nobody's testified one way or the other about the other changes to make sure that secular and religious public assemblies are being treated on equal footing in the code.
Yeah, that was good. I don't, I don't have anything to add. On, in terms of how we, how we audited the code, and made sure that the definitions were consistent throughout...
That looks good. I mean, to me, I see where you've audited the code, and you've changed it, you've taken it from, you know, sometimes it's not permitted, and you've made it permitted. Sometimes you've changed it from a, you know, conditional use to a permitted use, et cetera. But I do have questions. There's a couple places where I don't see why we are adding it. Now, you may, and I question whether we need it there for our Lupa, which is, you go to things like the resort marina, resort golf course. I mean, my, my interest wasn't really in spreading churches across the land, everything. It's where there's likely to be a church, or there could be a church. It could, should be on, I thought what the basic thing is, it should be on equal standing with other similar activities that aren't kind of just discretionary fun, or whatever, which is what a lot of the non, so I, but I, it just seems kind of, there's a couple little zones that it just doesn't make sense. So, I, I don't know, maybe you feel we have to have it there, but I just felt like, the Resort Nature Center, you can have a nature center, an observatory, a recreational path, and a church, or religious institution. It's like, really? Out in the Sun River, you can have a...
When we analyzed the Shepherdsfield matter, county staff, and I think the county commissioners, were always concerned with agritourism and other special events occurring in a farm. Luba's decision actually, that we were concerned that the special events, and agritourism events, those kinds of things, would be considered a secular public assembly. In Luba's decision, they actually noted, in response to Shepherdsfield's attorney's arguments, that there were numerous other classes of uses allowed in the wildlife area overlay zone, that they also considered secular public assembly. And so, based on Luba's more, I would say, expansive understanding of what is a secular public assembly, it was that more expansive understanding that we used for the code audit. And I agree, it was, it's a little bit more broad than our more narrow agritourism kind of events. But again, it's to ensure we're being responsive to Luba's treatment of the case.
Well, I guess, I mean, I, I'm not trying to, like I said, propagate churches, and I'm, I'm sensitive to the fact, we don't want to really decrease wildlife, and want to a deer panel that, where it was taught, we talked about some of these issues. But I, like, when we changed it with, on page, our packet 108, which is the wildlife area combining zone, we took it from a not permitted use to a permitted use. Well, it was because of religious institution and assembly. If you have a public or private schools right there, or Bed and Breakfast Inn, why wouldn't a, you know, why wouldn't a religious institution also be? Because those are, but, but we don't, you know, allow playgrounds, we don't allow dog kennels, golf courses. I mean, there's things that are, there's a difference, I guess, between kind of primary needs stuff, primary people stuff. And so, I guess I just kind of take that same view of like, on a resort or marina, it's like, it doesn't make sense, we're going to encourage... Maybe they, somebody would challenge us, but I doubt if we'd ever get, I guess they might win if they challenge us at Luba saying we've, you know, not met the tests of our Lupa, but I don't know. I just bring it up.
Yeah, the, I think, Mr. Chairman, you bring up a good point. I mean, pragmatically, the likelihood of a church going in, I'm going back to the Sun River urban unincorporated, Sun River is an urban unincorporated area. It has, it's a urban unincorporated community, technically, under state law. And we have a zone that addresses the various, there's, the unincorporated community has several zones. One of the, several of them are, are in, you know, areas one would not anticipate at a church, the resort marina, the resort golf course, the nature center. When we went through, again, it was just recognized that there's some secular uses that, you know, for example, the likelihood of having a church in a resort marina is very low. But there's a park, there's a playground, there, you know, one could have assemblies there. There's a restaurant, there's some commercial uses. So, we, you know, outside of the pragmatic aspect, just felt like, well, there are some comparable secular opportunities. And it made sense just to add that religious institution and assemblies. And the, the same is, you know, true at the, the nature center.
I get what you're saying, that there's, there are comparable secular activities. But there are different set of comparable, comparable secular activities than what we were talking about in the, in the FU, and the, you know, which were schools, you know, but, that were more like primary needs. These are, they wouldn't even have a resort zone, or marina zone, except you have a marina there. So, I don't know, just...
Commissioners, we, I think you stated it correctly. This is going, this was, the Shepherdsfield matter prompted us to do the code audit. The code audit identified a couple of other areas that, based on Luba's expansive understanding of a secular public assembly, could be issues in the problem. We have not experienced any issues in these code, or in these particular zones. If, if the board doesn't want to add churches in those provisions now, I think you stated it appropriately. We might face an our Lupa equal terms provision at some point in time in the future, although I think Peter's correct, it's unlikely, just because it's unlikely a church will ever be listed there. It might be helpful, so I've got the Luba decision open, and I'll read off the list of things that are allowed in the wildlife area combining zone, all of which they concluded were secular, or could have a secular public assembly occur. Agritourism and other commercial events and activities subject to Deschutes County code, that's what we were always concerned with. Commercial activities that are in conjunction with the farm use, a living history museum, extended outdoor mass gatherings, destination resorts, and guest ranches. So, they certainly, and there are some other past Luba case law that is reading secular public assemblies, interpreting that term very broadly, to include, for example, parks.
Okay. I was, you know, I don't know what, so, comments, Commissioner Dare, or Commissioner DeBonne?
I always read it as kind of the audit, where, you know, some analysis about this, these are the possibilities in, in reference to our Lupa. So, when it gets down to it, though, if we remove it from, you know, three or four little areas there, it is in the context of our Lupa. And, yeah, I mean, so, I kind of, I don't have a lot of direction on either way, because if it wasn't there, I don't feel like we'd be way out on a, you know, a plank on that, and having to worry about something. It could still hang together.
Commissioner Dare, thoughts?
I happen to believe that we need to have it, in as many places, if we were, if we were missing it, I, you know, okay, we may be going a bit where it's not applicable, but I'd rather be safe than sorry, because I think it's a really important issue. So, I'm, you know, I don't have, I, I believe it should be left the way it is.
Yes, I wouldn't propose to change it, just so, yeah.
I just bring it up because I noticed it and thought about it.
It is a broader proposed amendment. It deals with, I mean, it was, the Shepherdsfield matter prompted the code audit, the code audit prompted this text amendment. We did identify several other issues that we believed should be addressed as well. And notably, no testimony either for or against those other changes have been heard today. The community's been silent on the...
Okay. Was there anything else? So, we just need to decide whether we're going to do it the way you've remit? It just sounds like there's support to do that.
Option one, exhibit K. I think we have to add...
Right, there was the second interpretive issue, to the extent that the board was supportive of having explicit language in the WA combining zone, that again, gives, gives the county the ability to impose conditions of approval on both religious, on both religious assemblies and secular assemblies. There was a lot of testimony about the concerns that, you know, this type of amendment could have on our critical ecological areas. And I think this shows that, you know, the county has the, it, we already have it now, but it explicitly calls it out. And to the extent this issue's raised before the Land use Board of Appeals, it, it shows that we're, we're mindful of those arguments. And, and the board and the county, or, excuse me, Deschutes County, I'm not going straight to the board, but Deschutes County has the ability to impose conditions based on a case-by-case analysis of the proposal.
Yeah. I liked being able to use it in the one decision we did, and it may cause that to be the nexus of disagreement in the future, but it at least gives us the flexibility, and did allow us to reduce the number, you know, to something where we thought it has less impact. So...
Yeah, and I would, to pair it, Peter's comments, it's really confirming what I believe is the board's existing authority. But I think sometimes adding additional language in the code, clarifying that authority, removing the ambiguity from what be applicants. State law contemplates, of course, that we can, even for churches, that we can adopt conditions of approval to deal with infrastructure concerns. This additional language would be something on par, but noting that, of course, we can adopt additional conditions of approval to ensure that we're minimizing wildlife habitat impacts in the WA combining zone.
So, this says for outdoor assemblies? Is that, if that's the context of it?
Yes, and the intent being both secular and religious assemblies.
But I mean, yeah, so I mean, if somebody's building a building, and has parking spaces, and there's activities in the building, this isn't intended for that. This is for those possibly larger seasonal events, if somebody proposed it, which is outdoor wedding venue is the beginning of this whole deal.
That was certainly perspective we had when we put forward the language, that it would be addressing those more one-on-one potential conflicting issues.
Yeah, so it doesn't limit the size of, of the religious institution that's built, or doesn't...
I was...
That would have its own path of approvals.
That's what you're saying, is that would have, yeah.
I, I think anytime we're limiting the size of a proposed religious assembly, we're facing a substantial burden argument. I would propose that we're looking at infrastructure concerns, something, you know, that you can't have that large of a church unless you're willing to address, for example, the traffic impacts. And, you know, on that point, it's, I believe that we can mitigate our, our Lupa risk. Let's say, we could, a good code audit should eliminate 80 to 90% of the equal terms issues that could come up. Substantial burden issues are going to be a one-on-one issue every time a church submits an application, or, excuse me, a religious assembly or institution submits an application. So, this code audit by no means is intended to eliminate any our Lupa risk. That's impossible. This is meant to address the equal terms issues in our code, recognizing that there's always a substantial burden argument that might come up.
So, the proposal is to add the highlighted words to the existing exhibit?
Another thing that, looking through the package, there was the letters from, I guess it was Fish and Wildlife, I guess were comments on the EZ analysis, or is that what, there were a lot of comments on the wording used. And that's something we don't have to, are we going to comment on the EZ analysis? I mean, I, all the findings and stuff is a whole nother thing compared to what we decide, and I didn't know whether you wanted us to...
Great question, Mr. Chairman. We, as staff, we did take into consideration ODFNW's comments. They are, as you've heard in past proceedings, they're very concerned about the impacts on species that are of state concern. But because we're amending the wildlife area combining zone, and adding a, a use that wasn't otherwise allowed, we have to do that, that factors analysis, which is what the EZ, the, what is it, economic, social, environmental, and energy analysis, a factors analysis. So, we went through that analysis, and believe we've sufficiently argued why the economic and social benefits of allowing churches in the wildlife area combining zone are, are preferable, while acknowledging that there could be some environmental implications. And as you recall, through the Shepherdsfield proceedings, there was acknowledgement of the, of the social and economic benefits of having churches. And so, we also were, you know, mindful of, of the federal law, the our Lupa proceedings, and the, the Luba decision that acknowledged our code's not in compliance with equal terms. So, it's a long-winded way of saying, we are aware of ODFNW's comments.
And you've included some of them.
They're, they're in the record. We've addressed it in the EZ analysis and our findings, but none, and after considering that testimony, it is, the findings that are currently before the Board of County Commissioners, is that, after considering all those factors, the economic and social aspects are compelling enough to change our code to be in compliance with First Amendment rights afforded under our Lupa.
I went to this panel about, it was Deer Habits by the Library Forest. It was interesting, because we brought up the issues of, you know, there's been this supposed, you know, really decline of deer. And so, we brought up, you know, the people in the audience brought up the issue of cougars, they brought up the issue of snowfall. And then there's just, but there's assumption in a lot of this, there's just people, and it's hard to, you know, know. But it's going to be interesting to see what, what is causing that. I mean, I guess the Metolius area is almost completely devoid of...
The cougar population has doubled. It's up to like 8,000 now. It was, yes.
But it's hard, nobody would, people that were experts on it wouldn't say that's the main reason, or, they said this, I, I had thought the snowfall of the two, the last three years was a big factor, because it's been so extreme. And they said, well, no, the population, birth rate wasn't affected that much. But I, I don't know, it's just interesting, because it's, I, I hope it's not just that there's this amount of people, because it doesn't seem like that's going to change.
Are they reducing the number of deer tags, though, that the state...
Yeah, well, they have, yeah, over 20 or 30 years, they have a lot.
Okay.
But, but there's, I mean, you know, they only, the deer... But, but there's, I mean, you know, they only, the deer primarily are shooting bucks, so they're not, there's, if there's a big population of does, you can still have a lot of deer, and so it's, I don't know. But there is a lot of, another factor was poaching.
We had a huge buck on our property the other day. He made it through hunting season. I was very proud of him.
Yeah.
Yes, he, he's a big boy.
Very proud of him.
So do you need any further, do you want us to make a motion to amend it as discussed, or?
That's what Peter and I were just discussing, and it's the board's, it's of course, the board's option. You could direct us to come back at a later date for first reading, or I believe the documents are in the record today, if you want to proceed with it.
We're kind of in a get-it-done mode today.
And just, just for clarity, because as Adam and I were whispering, that we included for the, there's, right, there's, we gave you several alternatives for definitions. We included each of those definitions, for example, if you look at the memo, there's, there's four exhibit As. So if it's acceptable by legal, if you did a first reading clarifying the option that you want for the definition, confirming that you, you're comfortable with the condition of approval for the wildlife area combining zone, what staff would do, since it's already in the record, of course, for second reading, we would, those exhibits would be exclusive to, those amendments would be exclusive to those exhibits.
Want to do a motion?
Sure. So I'll move first reading of ordinance number 2019-018, including option number one for exhibit A in Q1 in the ordinance, and including proposed words for exhibit K in the ordinance.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
That was by title only, right?
By title only, thank you. You could be here for it if we didn't do that.
So I'm supportive of that, too. So Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So now I do the first reading, correct?
By title only.
I'll do a first reading by title only, and then seek adoption of the ordinance.
Well, it'll come back in two weeks.
Oh, that's right.
It's an emergency, this.
An emergency, okay. So first reading of this ordinance, but in title only. An ordinance amending to Deschutes County Code Title 18, Deschutes County zoning, Title 19, bend urban area zoning ordinance, and Title 23, the Deschutes County Comprehensive Plan to Ensure Equal Treatment of Religious Institutions per the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, R-Lupa of 2000. Is that it?
Yes.
All right, good. Thanks.
As we conclude, while I think Adam and I are going to be out on the 30th, December 30th, we could bring it, presumably we could bring it back on the 30th, or that gets done at this calendar year.
Do it next week.
I think is a Monday. I don't know if that's, would you, would administration prefer we come back in January?
Are we going to have a quorum on the 30th?
No, we, right now, we have obviously no Wednesday meetings.
Right.
The two Mondays are on calendars, but we have not teed up.
Okay, maybe we'll come back in January.
30th might go away.
Okay, so we'll come back on January.
I was thinking.
That'll be easier. Okay, we'll see in the...
We're driving to the Rose Bowl now.
Driving early.
I just got Euro prices for my airfare, so I'm...
Yeah. Apparently the 30th won't be in the day.
We'll be back on the 5th.
And the 22nd would be too soon, correct, or 23rd? Okay, so we would be seeing you in January, so, okay, good. Thank you for time with this. Bye, thanks.
Commissioners, Kyle Collins is back. He did make the proposed changes to permit condition number 18 on the outdoor mass gathering. Legal has reviewed it, and we're in agreement that it reads appropriately, hopefully captures what the board wanted. I can read that to you. What was added was that, quote, "The applicant shall ensure that the appropriate firefighting apparatus and equipment for utilizing any available water sources on site, including the irrigation pond, can and will be provided, should they be required. The effectiveness of any provided firefighting apparatus shall be confirmed by the Bend Fire Department."
Sounds good, Kyle. Good job.
The document I can pass, if you're agreeable, we'd need a motion approving that, and then the board could sign it.
Okay, looks good to me. Okay, so do you want, you want to make a motion approving this permit? Is that what we need?
Yes, it's document 2019-047.
Correct. I move we approve document number 2019-047, an outdoor mass gathering permit for the 2024 Peaks Music Festival.
And I'll second it.
Okay. Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Thank you. Thanks for getting that back.
Of course, thank you.
So that ends our action items for day. Seems like a good time for lunch recess. We have a few other items for after lunch, isn't that correct? Executive sessions and a couple other things for discussion, so...
Yeah, we have two executive sessions. One is the continuation from Monday, and then one for legal, and then we've got a whole series of small other items to go through.
I have to leave by 3:00, so I, shouldn't be any problem, but do you want to reconvene at 1:00 or 1:15, or?
1:00 is fine with me.
1:00 is okay with everyone? So 1:00, okay, thank you.
That's reconvene at 1:00 upstairs in the Allen Room.